Call the meeting to order, Karen, if you can call the roll.
President Furman?
Present.
Vice President Curry?
Here.
Alder Bennett? Alder Conklin?
Present.
Alder Figueroa Cole?
Here.
Alder Foster?
Here.
And Alder Heck may be joining us later if he's able. You have quorum.
Thank you. It sounds like he's going to be joining us in 10 minutes. I don't know if I can speak that slowly. So he may end up just missing the interviews. Looking at the rest of the agenda. To see if we can accommodate it if, all right, sorry, so if I get a motion for the minutes.
Alder, approve minutes.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, corrections, suggestions, comments on the minutes? Not seeing any. I'm going to assume approval by unanimous consent. And we will move on to public comment. The only public comment was there is nobody registered for the general public comment. Except for Alder Figueroa Cole, but I believe she probably did that to get her, to get connected this evening. But we have no other registrants, so we'll move on to disclosures and recusals. Do any members of the body have any disclosures or recusals to make under the city's ethics code? Not seeing any. Not seeing other, other members join us yet. All right, we'll go ahead and jump into the interview of candidates. Even though we are missing a few members, we do have enough for quorum and we'll make do. So I'd like to welcome, we have two candidates here this evening. CCC members, you are unfortunately very used to this process at this point. The big difference this evening from some of the previous is that we'll only be doing one round. And one of the choices when you use your voting software is if you guys decide that you would prefer to leave the seat vacant, that can be a choice. I know in our previous discussions at the Common Council Executive Committee, there was some. We were split on whether or not we did want to appoint somebody with remaining time or actually do this new round. Obviously, we're doing this new round, but we still have the option of leaving the seat vacant if that's what, what this committee wishes to recommend. Then the council can make a choice. So with that in mind, that's my quick introduction. All the candidates were provided their questions before. And these questions are the same questions we've been using for all of our vacancies. I'm hoping the people that are participating this evening that don't have their camera on, if they can at least turn their camera on when they are asking their question, that would be helpful. And we want, we are going to start with Dorothy. Dorothy, are you still with us? Go ahead and click the.
Okay, I'm here.
Video button and go ahead and start up your video again.
And I should start the video. Okay. Okay, I'm here.
Hi Dorothy, welcome. We will be, you will have approximately five minutes per question. There are six questions. They were provided to you beforehand and I'm going to kick it off by asking you the first question, which is describe your involvement in civic activities. What do you know about this position and why did you decide to apply?
Well, I was on the Common Council from 1993 to 2003. And so I'm very familiar with what we do, except you guys do everything different now. We never had, of course, this type of thing. But I was council, council pro tem from 1999 to 201 and, no, to 20,000, I'm sorry. And then I was council president from 20 to 201.
Great, thank you. Next question.
Do you not want what I was involved in prior?
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Oh, I don't, well, I mean, I can do it because it was one of the questions. Okay, thank you. Prior to serving on the Common Council, I volunteered at Central Wisconsin Center. Over 30 years serving as president of the auxiliary for several years, I was active in the Northside Community Council for over 10 years. And I served 10 years on the Alcohol License Review Committee I was appointed by then Mayor Paul Soglan. Since retiring, I applied and we received a 501(c)(3) for the Warner Park Community Recreation Center. That place is really dear to my heart and the circle of friends, we raised money. And I, and I typed, I sent you my answers and I put rise, but we raised money for the center. And I volunteer in the summertime of Vera Court's reading buddies program. So that's, I guess, that I, is all I have for that one. And then, and I think you also asked, why did you decide to apply for this position? I'm very concerned with the 12th District not having a voice.
Thank you, Dorothy. Our next question, I do not actually have my list up, who was going to say that? I think it is, does anybody know who was asking the next question?
It was supposed to be Alder Bennett.
Okay, Alder Heck, can you go ahead and ask the next question? Totally put you on the spot.
It's gonna take me a while to get oriented.
Okay, I'll go ahead and ask it. That's fine. Welcome Alder Heck. Dorothy, your next question, as you see, we're, we're juggling with, with attendance. Is what knowledge, skills and resources do you already possess that will help you become an effective alder?
I served on several committees and boards, including the Board of Estimates, Common Council Organizational Committee, which is now you, CCC Executive Committee. The Community Development Block Grant, Daycare Advisory Board, Care Core Oversight Committee, Dane County Coordinating Council. Fair Share Housing Work Group, Joint Committee on Community Centers, Madison City Arts, Monona Terrace Headquarters Hotel Advisory Committee. Neighborhood Resource Team, Park Commission, Parks MSCR Study Group, Rhythm and Booms Planning Committee. Strategic Planning Committee, Warner Park Community Recreation Center Advisory Board. CCOC Subcommittee on Framework and CCOC Subcommittee on Public Input and Access. And that's a common council committee is similar to what you have right now. The Ice Arena Study Committee, Redistricting Committee, Ad hoc Oversight Committee. Excuse me, Ad hoc Oversight Committee for Intercity Rail Facility Programs and Fee Committees. A Park Commission, Pedestrian Bicycle Motor Vehicle Commission and the Common Council Legislative Committee.
It's good to see that we've always had tons of committees as a city. That has not, not changed.
We tried to get rid of a whole bunch of them when I was council president. And so we all agreed, we took him to the council. And nobody, none of those alders wanted any committee that they were on pulled. Isn't that, that's where it goes. So you'll never get rid of them.
We're trying to, we've been trying as well. Are there any clarifying questions that anybody has based on that? We did not do that with the first one. I'll ask once again, I guess, at least at the end, if anybody has clarifying questions about any of the questions. So just take a quick note if you, there was something you wanted to follow up with that Dorothy said that you wanted to go a little bit more detail on. I do know who our next question comes from and it's Alder Conklin. Alder Conklin, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Hi Dorothy.
Hi, I'm getting, I like to see your faces and put them so I know who's who.
Well, I'm here, Alder Conklin. Please describe the ways you practice and demonstrate equity and inclusion and how you would model these practices in this assignment. Please provide an example of measure you have taken to further your knowledge of equity, inclusion and racial justice.
Well, equity and inclusion has always been a top priority of mine. I live on the north side. And so we want to include everyone. And when we were working on the Warner Park Community Recreation, that was built in 1999. Of course, I was on that board. And if any of you are aware with the 12th District in Warner Park. You will know that it was very important to bring the neighborhoods all together, rich and poor, black and white. Low and high income, everything, because we have such a mixture of neighborhood centers. And so our mission statement that we came up with, that it will be a gathering place. Which provides a note of growth and enrichment opportunities for the Madison community. And connects people of all ages, races and cultural backgrounds. And the mission statement, not only do we have it, but it has measurable goals. And as far as I know, I haven't checked recently and maybe COVID, it was a problem, but it has always met those goals. We got HUD funding for the center and it was very important that we served, you know, an 80, you know, a certain percentage of lower income people. And after the HUD funding, it was paid for in 10 years, we said we still want to do that because our center, it's, it's a wonderful center. And I hope all of you come over and visit it someday. It's wonderful. Oh, I know. And what would I, was there a second part to that question? And what would I do now?
Yeah, it was kind of, what did you, what was your examples of measures that you've taken? If you wanted to elaborate more on that.
And it's, it said, what would I do now? I would work with every alder. I think it's so very important that we all work together. And that we support one another. For instance, I don't know your traffic problems over in your district. I know I'm in the north side. And so I always relied on the other alders. And if any of you, excuse me, have a, something that you need help with. I, I'm here. I, I, I work with everyone. And okay, oh, and oh, I, I think I said, what have I done? I read the racial equity and social justice initiative. And I agree with most of it. The only one I kind of is that we want kids prepared for jobs. Well, the problem is on the north side and it may be on the south side, I'm sure too. Some of our schools can't read at some, in the third grade. There, I mean, we're talking about 37%. And so we got, every kid has got to learn to read and we've got to somehow or other work with the school district. And it's important that all kids learn to read. Otherwise, I agree with it. I mean, I don't disagree. It just, it didn't say that. I would have liked to add that to it.
Thank you, Dorothy. Our next question will come from Alder Foster.
Good evening Dorothy. What are some of the critical issues facing District 12 and what are some of the critical issues facing the city?
Well, the contamination of the Oscar Meyer property is certainly a big problem. And I live in the Sherman Neighborhood Association area. And so we talk about it a lot. And then the, the need for mixed income housing, not placing all the lowest income people all in one spot. Because that is, is going to be a problem someday if we don't get the help they need. The need for market rate housing and, and the middle, that, and housing that the middle class can afford. Because a lot of our middle class that live on the north side, really, the property taxes, everything's gone up so high. Well, of course, you know, purchasing stuff has gone up high too. And we have a problem at the Oscar Apartments, those were just built. And that is market rate, that is a mixed one. So it was perfect, wonderful. And they don't have any management. And I have a lady that works on the fourth, lives on the fourth floor. That the elevators aren't working. She has a heart problem. She's been staying in her apartment. And so that's got to be addressed. And actually, I saw it on Nextdoor and I said, you know, call a building inspection. They don't have an alder to call. So they have to, building inspection is the place to go. And hopefully they have done that. And then the proposed development at the Fleen House at 1617 Sherman Avenue. Yeah, that's going to be coming up, I think, in February. And speeding on East Washington and Northport and Packers is always a problem. And the Hawthorne-Tuex Neighborhood Plan will be coming up January 24th. They'll, they'll be having their first, I think, staff meeting. I just saw it today. I don't know anything about it at this point in time, but I know there, we did several when I was alder. And then the tiny house villages, we support them because a lot of people cannot afford housing. And they can't live with a bunch of people. They need to have their own kind of room. But over on Aberg, they were pretty, a lot of trash was out a lot of times. And Brenda has cleaned it up or Occupy Madison has cleaned it up now. But wooden houses should have been started to be inbuilt to replace the canvas ones that are there. And they haven't started. So we got to get those done, because they're supposed to be done by the summer of '23. I don't think they will be. But if we can get them done by next winter, it would be wonderful. So that's just a few of the things. You know, you know, all the big ones, I'm sure, in the city.
Thank you, Dorothy. Our next question will be from Alder Figueroa Cole.
Thank you, Cher. Hello, so my question, it's kind of simple. You received a lot of feedback from residents surrounding the project in the district. Your general sense is 60% are against the project and 40% are for it. How do you balance public feedback against policies, goals and priorities? And what steps do you take into consideration to arrive at your position?
Well, I can tell you what I did when I was an alder. I usually listened to the 60% because that's what I was elected to represent. The entire district, but you'll have, you listen to everyone. And if I found it was something that was really needed. But you know, 40% was, or 60% was having a problem with it. I usually would go into the neighborhood meetings. I would go to any other meeting. I'd make myself where I could email and correspond with them. To try to get them to go along. And you know what? They do. Sometimes they don't understand why a certain, whatever we're doing. Is so very important to the city. And so, you know, you just have to do what you have to do to get it done. But normally I'd go with the, you know, the 60%. Now, if you're talking about 47% and 53, well, you know, that's a little different too.
Thank you. Our next question is from Vice President Curry.
Good evening Dorothy. Sorry, it took me a little while to find my unmute button. How do you reach District 12 residents who are not engaged in traditional ways like neighborhood associations?
Yes, I know. And neighborhood associations, I absolutely love them. But a lot of times no one comes to them until there is a big problem. And the Sherman Neighborhood Association the other night had one of its biggest attendants because of the Oscar Meyer and the problems and the concerns. But you know, what, what I always did, I'm out in the community almost every day now. So I hear lots of things. And I, I meet people. I'm in the grocery store and local restaurants. I'm a north sider. And also at the Warner Park Community Recreation Center, I'm, I'm over there three or four days a week. So I see lots of people. I'm in a couple of classes over there. And then I have an extensive email list. So I would keep emailing. And we just have to find ways to get people in. I believe in neighborhood associations. I think they are absolutely fantastic, but I mean, maybe you have different results than what we had. But our neighborhood associations, the membership is going down on the north side right now. So you know, it is just, you just try to reach out however you can.
Thank you, Dorothy. Are there any members of the Common Council Executive Committee or any other alders that are here with us this evening? That have clarifying questions, not new questions, but something that they heard that they wish to be clarified? All right, not seeing any. Thank you again, Dorothy. We're going to interview our next candidate. And then we will take a vote and we'll let you know what, what, what our recommendation will be.
Well, thank you very much. I think the way you're doing this is fantastic to, for you to appoint an alder to fill this little space. You know, that doesn't work. So I think this way, someone that is not running is a good way to do it. So thank you. Now I should mute myself, right?
Yes, thank you. Barbara, welcome. If you can go ahead and unmute yourself and share your video.
One and the other one. Let's start my video.
Barbara, we can see you. Welcome.
Okay, hold on just one second. Okay. Can you see me now? Looks like I'm not live anymore.
Yeah, you seem frozen. I, we see a frozen image of you. I don't know if you want to stop your video and start it again.
And I'll start again.
That seems to have done the trick.
Good going.
Welcome. You just saw how the interview process works. We're going to jump right into it. The first question will be from me. And it will be, describe your involvement in civic activities. What do you know about this position and why did you decide to apply for this position?
Well, first I want to thank you for having this committee meeting. And I think it's really important, part of democracy, really well at work to have this kind of thing happening. I think it's very important to have representation for the District 12. And I'm really excited, actually, I'm very excited and looking forward to possibly be the candidate for. I mean, be the representative for District 12. I've been living in Madison for the last 42 years of my life. I've lived in Emerson, Emerson East Neighborhood all that time. And I know the district really well. I know the people really well, although things do come and go, people come and go. I have previously served on the Madison City Council for six years from 1995 to 2001. I entered the same year as Mike Druffier. And then I had some years off and then I was asked to join the, the remaining term of. And then it went from there into a full term of the Dane County Board of Supervisors. And I served on that body for six years also. So I kind of have a lot that I know about local government, albeit it's in the past. There are a lot of things that have changed and I'm really looking forward to learning about all those changes and working together with everyone. My civic activities are really vast and overly, overly numerous. So just to mention some things. I'm passionate about music. I'm, I was a co-founder of Make Music Madison. I sing in the James Reed Unitarian Choir. I've, I go to all the multicultural festivities in the summertime and participate in all of those. I, I've also been very involved in WRT radio. I served in, on that, in that radio station for several years. Until I decided to run for city council in 1995. Looks like I'm shaky. Can you hear me at least? Looks like.
We can hear you. There is a weird shake, but you may, your video may be paused. So, but there we go. You're back. You're better. Go ahead, but we, we, we heard you loud and clear though.
Thank you, thank you. So I have two grandchildren who live here. We have our son. He used to be on the Dane County Board of Supervisors also. I have two grandchildren and one 10-year-old boy and one six-year-old grandchild girl. And I spend a lot of time with them. We have a lot of fun playing and working together and they're very creative and wonderful and I just adore them. And I want to try to make Madison an even better place for them growing up. So if I can do it in this way, I'd really like to do that. I've served on the county ADRC, Aging and Disability Resource Center and the Wisconsin ACLU Board. And still communicating, trying to communicate, work with people that are concerning the F-35s, which is a done deal. But, but there's still many, many concerns about it. And, and I'm trying to help out in that, in that regard. I've also been, I mentioned WRT, WYRU is all, as well, our community access TV station and very involved with them. And so I have, I have the experience and knowledge of being on the council and being on the county board. And I decided to run because I was asked and I thought it was a very good time to come in for three months and try to help do my part. I thought it was very, very important, crucially important, that District 12 has a representative. And I would like to serve in that capacity for the next three months. I don't know what else to tell you, except that I've, I've been very actively involved. One thing that I, I want to pursue, and I've mentioned to some people already, is that this, it's an issue that's very, very close to me. And it's having to do with home healthcare services. And this is a huge, huge crisis, not only in Madison, not only in Dane County, but in all of Wisconsin and all the other states nationally. People cannot, like myself, cannot find people to help them as personal care workers or caregivers. There are no, there's no one in, out there that is interested in this type of job. And there has to be some kind of communication and work, very, very strong work in this area. Because it allows people like me and people who are elderly to live in the community, to continue living in our homes. Living in the community, being active members of the community. And otherwise we, I would be forced into a nursing home or assisted living facility, would not be home and would not, I wouldn't have the freedoms of participating in the community the way I do now. It's incredibly important because people. I, I would like to be able to focus on it on the city council level. Because it's so incredibly, it's such a crucial crisis. It's a huge crisis and I can't overstate it. But I will be talking to everybody more about that because it's so incredibly important. And it's, it's a problem, a huge problem. So those are some of my activities. I don't know if you'd like to know more about any of that.
That, that's good. You're, you're a little over five minutes. So we're going to move on to the next question. And Alder Bennett, do, are you with us? You want to ask the question or would you like Alder Heck to do it?
Hi, sorry. Can Alder Heck do it?
You can.
I'm listening. I just have things.
Yep, Alder Heck, go ahead.
I can do that. Good evening, Barbara. What knowledge, skills and resources do you already possess that will help you become an effective interim alder?
Well, I have all the skills that, and expertise of having been on the council already for six years. And also on the Dane County Board. I have, I was part of all those, going to meetings, meetings, gazillion meetings all the time that you're all really well aware of. I have, I was part of all those, going to meetings, meetings, gazillion meetings all the time that you're all really well aware of. I, I have experience in working with city staff with my constituency, um, going to the meetings that are very important, um, including city committee meetings and district meetings, meetings with residents and meeting with city staff. I've gone through this before and I want, would like to mend the new ropes of being on the council now with all this, but I do have those, now, that knowledge and skills that I already, um, have possessed since I was Alder and Dane County Board Supervisor. And, um, so I know what it's like and I'm ready for three months of working on it.
Thank you Barbara, uh, our next question will be from, um, Alder Conklin.
Hi Barb.
Hi, I don't know if I can speak to you, oh, anyway, it's now, hi.
Karen. Hello.
Hi.
Um, please describe the way you practice and demonstrate equity and inclusion and how you would model these practices in this assignment. Please provide an example of measure you have taken to further your knowledge of equity, inclusion and racial justice.
Well, I have one thing that's very, very close to my life that I am involved in that, that, um, is dealing with equity, inclusion constantly and that, those are the people who help me, these are the people who come into my home and help me with my personal cares both in the mornings and in the evenings. I've had people from all over the world, it's amazing, this is a wonderful part of my life and something that I'd like to be able to continue with this crisis that I just mentioned, but I've had women from West Africa, I've had women from Central Americas, South America, Tibet, um, um, all parts of, different parts of the world and I just lost a wonderful worker who is from, is from Tibet, she's Afri- she's American, but she's Tibetan origin. I have all this cultural richness that has come into my life because of these people and I deal with them on a daily basis, they come in my home, they come in my bedroom, they go in my closets, they're a real integral part of my, my personal life and we get to talk to each other to, um, oh, I'm shaking there. Let's see, looks like I'm getting spazzing. Anyway, that's really strange, this, oh. Anyway, um, I'm trying to get myself looking bright again, it's been shaking, uh, start videoing here. Let's see if this is, is this better, yes, I'm not shaking. Um, so anyway, um, what was I speaking about, um, measures I've taken to for equity and inclusion. I was, and when I was on the city council, I was on the Equal Opportunities Commission, I served on that body for the long term and I dealt specifically with, um, the disparities in the African-American community, what it had to do with traffic stops by the police for, and the disparity, huge disparity. We, we, um, studied that, we made recommendations, I'm, I, um, I've worked with seminars, workshops and I've worked together with multicultural organizations like Centro Hispano, um, Just Dane, the A D R C, Aging and Disability Resource Center, then, and I'm now involved in the Wisconsin Poor People's Campaign. So this is something that's very, very important and, and, and for me, I, when I was on the council, I worked on and was helped put together the Living Wage Ordinance, which is for people who are at low income and, um, uh, I, um, I'm just seeing in my notes if I forgot anything, but, I think those are, um, I think there's more to tell you, but that's what I have for now and, but I welcome any questions you might have too.
Um, thank you Barbara, we're gonna go on to the next question, um, and that's from, uh, Alder Foster, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Hi Barbara.
Hi Graham.
What issues facing District 12, uh, and the rest of the city?
Well, the, all the ones that Dorothy talked about, their developments are, you know, on the high list for this, uh, the, um, development going on at Sherman Avenue and with, um, the W P S building there and neighbors wanting, thinking that they, they want to keep that as a historic district, although it doesn't have that, um, that distinction right now and, um, and this concerns, it's controversial issue, it's a, would be a large area to develop. Um, but there are also other developments as well, the Oscar Meyer site, I'm glad Dorothy mentioned contamination there, it's a very strong, important problem there. Um, and the Ruth Keisite next to Oscar Meyer, this is something that's an issue and, uh, the Oscar apartments too. There is, it's, it needs to be addressed, the issues there because people are having big problems there and there are a lot of police calls and, and there is, the management needs to be, um, brought to speed with what's happening and I'd be happy to do that with the residents and, uh, other issues, um, passenger rail is huge, hugely important, and I know there are a couple sites being looked at for possible stations in District 12, but regardless, wherever it is, that passenger rail is huge, enormous and wonderful, it needs to come to Madison, um, and, um, the T O D Transit Oriented Development Quarters, tho- those are all, that's a big issue on the city level, they, they need to, there needs to be a lot of work on that and there is, I know now. You know, East Washington Avenue in my district is, has been primed to do that and has been working on that for a while. And, um, also I've heard about Sherman Avenue also being possibly a T O D district. And this is very important because we need to have, um, good transportation in our, in our city and, and good public transportation with the, the buses and the rail coming and, um, and having traffic be, be flowing more, more, in better, in better ways. And I've had, um, the, um, I just, I was thinking something, um, uh, but, uh, those are, and let me see if I'm, if I had something else that, those are big and city issues, um, the F thirty-fives continue to be a problem and I, I really would like to keep working with, I know it's, it's, it's done and not much we can do, but there needs to be mitigation with what's happening and how it's gonna affect the residents' living and I'm part of that. The District 12 is very, very strongly, um, affected by the F thirty-fives and that, um, it needs to be worked on more and more to make it the best possible situation for people who are affected by the, by the problem. Um, and I, I don't know, there might, I'm sure there are other things, I can't figure them right now. Hmm, can we get the, the gap thing again?
Barbara, uh, Barbara, thank you, um, uh, your video, uh, we heard you perfectly, um, but yeah, your video is being a little weird again, um, you're welcome to try starting and stopping it again, um, and in the meantime, um, Alder Figaro Cole, uh, has the next question for you. Alder Figaro Cole, you're muted.
I'm okay.
Thank you, um, hi Barbara, so my question is going to be a little bit longer. You're, you receive a lot of feedback from residents surrounding a project in the district, your general sense is that sixty percent are against the project and forty percent are for it. How do you balance public feedback against policies, goals and priorities? What steps will you take into consideration to arrive at your position?
Well, I, um, I know this to be true, it happened, um, when I was in my council previously, I had a lot of issues like this, similar to this, with sixty, forty and that kind of issue. Um, I, I think it's very, it's, it's crucially important to get full information and, and for the background of each, um, um, issue that is for any project. Um, this, this scene where the residents have said, um, listening to the city staff, getting as much information as possible on the background and where people stand now, the, the residents, the city, and, um, I think weighing the positives and negatives are, are very difficult, but they need to be addressed and looked at, all the conversations, discussions that have happened and, um, the overriding issues. See if any of those can be resolved or mitigated in any way to make it best for all. I think the ma- the main goal is overall benefit of the project, weighing the positives and the negatives and talk is the key thing. And information from residents, staff, all the parts that are involved to, to see what will be the best overall outcome. And my thing is, I'm spazzing out again. And, uh, yeah, that's, that's how it's, if you have any other question about that, I'd be happy to try to answer it. But I think it's mainly communication, learning the background, here, listening, listening is the key word to residents, to city staff, gathering all the information possible. And, you know, as, as much full disclosure as possible about, uh, all the angles and issues being raised. And trying to come to the best kind of, uh, overall, um, effect for the city and the district. They're both important, what, how the city develops, now the ne- district develops and they have to really be taking stride, both, both aspects, if they are conflicting with each other. And try to have those issues worked out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, our, uh, last question will be from Vice President Curry.
Hi Barbara.
Hi.
How do you reach District 12 residents who are not engaged in traditional ways like neighborhood associations?
Well, um, that's always the, something that's daunting task, but, um, I would use neighborhood e-lists, the different neighborhoods have different email lists for the constituency, the residents who have lived there and try to communicate through that outlet, like Nextdoor or, um, other email lists of specific people in the neighborhoods and wanna communicate together with each other, I would be part of that, using that. Also, meeting with constituents, I'm, I'm always ready to meet with people and hear about, um, their interests and, um, and their problems and issues. Um, I would use the City District 12 blog, because I, I saw that my predecessor, Sayad, did a lot of work in that way and I would like to continue that and, and get out a lot of information and receive information through that city blog. Telephone exchanges, you know, anything that's possible to use to try to reach people, have them be able to reach me, uh, I will try, you know. Neighborhood associations, I can always tell people about a meeting that might be happening and they, maybe they don't do that regularly, but they might go to one if they know that the issue that they're concerned about is gonna be addressed at that particular meeting. Um, and, I don't know, anyway, keep on.
Thank you Barbara very much, um, are there any, um, questions, uh, clarifying questions, not new questions, but clarifying questions based on anything that you heard from Barbara's answers? From any of the Alders on C C E C or any of the other Alders that are here with us this evening? Okay, not seeing any, um, Barbara, we're gonna take a, a brief pause, um, Barbara and Dorothy will both be tip, well, just to let you know, we're gonna take a brief pause now to do, um, uh, uh, fill out our, uh, ranking and, uh, let you folks know, uh, what, what our recommendation will be. Um, uh, C C E C Alder, so you know, um, you should have all received, um, an, an, uh, email from, um, from Pivot. Um, um, I believe it was sent out, uh, early afternoon, um, if anybody needs me to resend it, I can. Um, information as a reminder is in that email on how to vote, how you drag people's names up to the, the, the top so you can rank them and then rank them in the order, um, that you wish to rank them in and, uh, then click the reviewed button. Um, and once that's all set, um, we have everybody's vote, I will go ahead and announce what our recommendation will be.
All right, um, President Furman, where did you send it again, I'm looking for it.
It is, it is sent to your District Eight account, uh, Alder Bennett, um, uh, I could tell you, um, when I received mine, it would have been around the same time, should have received it around...
From who, like, can I just click?
Yeah, yeah, give me, um, it would have been, uh, uh, received at about, uh, one fifty-nine P M, um, from Pivot Libre.
Oh, okay, got it, thank you.
Yep.
President Furman, I don't believe I received that email, but, uh, I got one at five forty-four, so I'm good there, do we have to reset our password?
If you can't, if you can't get in, yes, but your, whatever password you used the last time, we use the vacancy tool, uh, would be the same password, but if that's not working, go ahead and reset it.
Uh, oh, maybe I know it.
Uh, President Furman, I received the link and I'm in, but I'm not seeing an option for District 12.
Just go ahead, go ahead and refresh the page again and it should show up, it's a weird, weird little bug that happens at times.
I'm logging in, log back in.
Can you please confirm that you received my vote?
Um, I can, I can confirm that in a second, Alder Figaro Cole, yep, um, so, so far, um, it, it's only, uh, District, uh, nine and sixteen, I have not received votes from yet, um, so.
President Furman?
Go ahead Alder Conklin.
Okay, thank you, um, yeah, that's the problem, I don't have District 12 on my election things.
Yeah, so just click, click the refresh button on your browser and, and it should show up, it's not, then try clicking on, clicking on the link in the email again and see if that comes up. Looks like you're all set Alder Conklin, uh, as far as seeing the ballot, um, so go ahead and take your time to vote and looks like Vice President Curry also can see the ballot, so, um, once I've got their votes, I will tabulate the, the recommendation.
President Furman, did you get mine? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you everybody for voting, it does look like I have everybody's votes, um. Okay, um, so I, uh, before I announce the results, I really do wanna thank, um, both Dorothy and Barbara for, for your past service. Um, I wanna thank you both for, uh, being willing to come, come out of Alder retirement and jump back into the fire. Um, putting yourself up for, for this is, is certainly not easy, um, and, uh, you know, answering our questions tonight is certainly not easy, I've been there in the past, uh, having filled a vacancy, so really, really do appreciate, uh, both of you, um, coming forward and, um, participating this evening. Um, I have, um, tallied the results of, of the, um, of the Common Council Executive Committee, um, and, uh, we are going to be recommending, um, Barbara Vetter to fill the position. So, um, again, I wanna thank you both so much for applying, um, Barbara, we will be in touch, um, about, uh, what the next steps are. Um, uh, you know, I, I, what I do in these in the past is, uh, recommend that, that folks join committees, you guys have put in, um, Dorothy, you have put in a ton of time, um, but, uh, as always, you are welcome to apply to committees if you wish to continue to be involved and, um, certainly don't be shy, um, reaching out to, to, you know, your Alder and all Alders, um, with questions, comments, concerns and suggestions, so. Um, thank you so much, um, again, and, um, we will move on to the rest of our agenda. Um, so, uh, the, the next item on our agenda, um, would be, um, the, the actual referral that we have, um, that would appoint this position. Um, so, uh, you know, the, that, that is legislative file, um, seven four eight nine four, um. If there is, um, is there any objection with me adding everybody's name, uh, that's here this evening as a sponsor, um, for that? If you don't see any objection, um, is there any, uh, questions, comments, um, uh, on, on, uh, the, the appointment, um, item? Unless I see a hand that says, uh, that says otherwise, I'm going to assume unanimous consent and, um.
Sorry, President Furman, do we need a motion?
Yes, I do need a motion. Sorry, yep. A little bit, a little, not in, not in the flow yet. So who wants to make a motion to appoint Barbara as the recommended District 12 Alder?
Move to point.
Alder Bennett, can I get a second? And Vice President Curry with a second. Great. Now that we actually have something that we can put in the meeting minute notes, if there's, as long as there's no objection, I'm going to assume unanimous consent and we will move on to the additional items on tonight's agenda. So the, the next item on our agenda is Legislative File 75055, amending the 2023 adopted operating budget to real, reallocate $15,000 within the Common Council 2023 operating budget for interns stipends. The sponsor, do we have a sponsor that's here with us this evening? Nope, it does not appear we do. Karen, do you want to talk about this item very briefly?
Sure. So this item would expand the existing 2023 budget for interns from the current amount of $250 per Alder to $1,000 per Alder. So it would be building on the program that we are currently getting ready for you all to, to use.
Thank you. And the, the only other thing that I would just add as an introduction to that would be that the money is coming from what, what, what would have been the money that was allocated towards an Alder pay increase, which was not approved by the, enough of the Common Council to take effect. So that's where the budgetary funds come from. Are there any questions for staff on this item? Alder Figaro call, go ahead.
Thank you. Hey Karen, I guess I'm, I'm a little bit confused about the whole, the whole program. I thought that when we had the discussion about, about putting money on our accounts, individual accounts, that was meant just as a way to, as a way of disperse the funds. But the program itself was just one bucket of money. Like, it wasn't like I get $200 for my own personal thing. I thought that the whole idea was we have one bucket of money for interns and that the, those $200 of each of us was in that bucket. Can you please explain?
Yes, so there was a lot of discussion leading up to that. And CCEC ended up directing to, to do 250 to everybody's Alder expense accounts prioritized for an intern, but allowed to be used for other allowable expenses if the Alder decided not to have an intern. So that's that money. Maybe, I'm not sure if you, we have an office intern and that's for the summer. And that's a separate bucket of money that's for the office, for the intern, for the aspire intern. I'm not sure if, if you're thinking of that one as well, but. That one's still there.
Yeah, I, I thought that the 200, $250 was just, you know, just an allocation on the box. But we will group it all together to, to hire interns, not for individual, but like interns to serve for the council, not for each person. So I was, I guess I was confused about that.
Yes, that, that's correct. We have the aspire intern for the office in the summer, separate money. Completely different story. This one, this amendment would increase the stipend amounts for the individual interns. And if you remember, we were talking, and I'm hoping in, in February to be able to bring back to you the plan for rolling this out, the Alder Intern Matching Program that we've been working on for a few months now. So we're gonna have a framework for it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Conklin.
Thank you, Chair. So yeah, I think I have a little bit more of a clarifying question as well. So with this $1,000, is that added to the $250? Or is 750 added to the 250 to make it 1,000?
750 is added to the 250 to make it 1,000. I am looking just to see. This, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
And I'm going, I'm reading means the wording of the amendment. And this amendment would add 750 per Alder dedicated to interns stipends. So this additional 750 per Alder would be for, specifically for, for interns.
So when we're saying like, okay, we have $1,000 for an intern, is that for the full term? Is that for six months? Like, and, and how do we pay them according to the work that they may have done, I guess? Is that up to the individual Alder? Or is that something like we have to have written out in a contract before they start any work for us? Or how is that gonna work?
So those are great questions, and this is the work that we've been doing to, to build the program, to give you some framework and guidance. And as it stands now, Katie, Katie Agar was working on it. So I'll be picking that back up from her to bring to you. But as it stands now, the, our document, we're going to be giving you kind of like agreement documents, suggestions, things to cover, ideas about that. And then there is some paperwork with HR that we would have to do to provide the money. Something new that came up that I'm intrigued by, that I'm thinking about is the question of perhaps, let's say several, you know, two Alders or three Alders have a little bit of work they'd like an intern to do. So could they share an intern, for example? You know, this is something we've started to, to think more about. And I, I'm feeling like putting this in as well. Because, you know, it may be that you have five hours a, a week, but somebody else has 10 and that's a, a good amount together. And then you could access two people's worth of, two Alders' worth of, of stipend if you chose to. I think the plan so far, and again, I, I, I think we're planning on having CCEC discuss this more, or weigh in on it when we have something to show you. I think the idea is that it's really Alder-driven in a lot of ways. And so you can decide how much of a stipend you want to offer. And, you know, maybe you want an intern for the summer, maybe you want an intern for a month, maybe, you know, four months. You know, right now, the idea is because we don't have a lot of, the idea is that you'll be able to sort of dictate that and work that out with the person that would be coming on to, to interview, or intern for you. And it would, it would really be up to you and, and working it out with them how you wanted to do the, the details.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Conklin, Alder Heck, go ahead.
Thank you. Question for Karen. I know that this program hasn't really been developed and you've been working on it. But I'm, I'm interested in knowing in your mind, who would be managing Alder intern, interns? Alders or council staff?
So for the Alder intern program that we have conceptualized, it would be Alders who would be responsible for the day-to-day management of their interns. Cultural staff is responsible for the management of the council office intern. So the summer intern that we get, that's, that's, that's our, we'll be managing that. But these, these really would be something that the Alders would do the day-to-day management of.
And do you envision them being housed in council, in the council office?
So the design as we have it so far, it doesn't, it doesn't provide that type of, of structure. It's, it would rely on the intern to have their own computer to be able to do the, the work that they need to do in consultation with the Alder. So I would imagine it would be remote or something. Maybe there are community spaces, maybe an, an Alder has a particular solution that they would like to implement. I know that, not to put Alder Bennett on the spot, but Alder Bennett had an intern. And they worked unpaid intern, but they worked out that, that she was sort of the pilot and, and kind of helped us generate the thoughts on, on how could something like this be off, you know, structured or offered to the Alders more than just individually as one-offs. And so, oh, it doesn't look like she is, is here. Anyway, so that was how she had handled it. So we were kind of starting from that, that point. And then we wanted to give you resources and documents and, and then there's some, there's some HR related requirements.
Thank you. That, that, that answered my question.
Thank you, Alder Heck. Are there any other questions for staff? Okay, we'll, we'll just jump in discussion. If somebody wants to make a motion, they're welcome to. But we could start with Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. I'm not above this. I guess for a couple, I just want to share some of those.
Alder Foster, Alder Foster. Alder Foster, would, would you mind just stopping your video? Maybe that will help your audio break it up a bit.
Yeah, is, am I coming through any better here?
You are.
Okay, so yeah, I, I've got a couple of concerns with it. I think number one, internships themselves often can be a little problematic. I think in a lot of contexts, they're a way to either get unpaid or sort of very lowly paid labor, which is something that I, I kind of object to. Number two, I think when they're not actually labor and they're more of a sort of educational experience or, or opportunity to get experience for a student or someone else, I think they actually take quite a bit of work to manage, to do successfully. I think that is something that is appropriate to have for the broader council, where we have staff that are able to support those interns. I think it's, it can be a good learning opportunity. And I think it's a, it's an interesting place to, to give an opportunity to interns. But I think we should be realistic that it's likely going to take as much paid support by other, by staff to support those internships as we're going to get out of the interns themselves in terms of, of product. Unless not always the case, but I think in general, in my experience, that's how it works out. I think the idea of having individual interns for individual Alders is more problematic. I, I, I don't, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me, you know, in a number of ways. And I, I really, I think objects to using the money that was budgeted for increased Alder pay for this purpose. We've got an agenda item coming up on our, our, our agenda yet today to talk about some other potential for better administrative or more administrative support for Alders, which is something that I support. This is something that even those that did not support increased Alder pay often use as a rationale is we don't need to pay Alders more, we just need to make the job easier. I'm looking forward to that conversation. But at this point, I would not support taking some of the money that was budgeted for, essentially for, for improving the conditions of Alders towards this purpose. Because I think at the end of the day, it's, it's not gonna work. And so, yeah, I would not support it.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Any other comments from members? Alder Heck, go ahead.
Thanks. I, I won't be supporting this either. I, I, I think from the, the answers that I received from my questions, it was pretty clear that this does have the potential to place undue burden on our, our council staff. And I, I also don't see that in most circumstances, there would be a benefit to, to having Alders have, having interns at this level of pay. So I'll, I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Heck. Any other discussion? Alder Tischler, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for letting me speak. Well, I, I'm, I'm in favor of this only because I think it could be an excellent opportunity for especially students who might get an opportunity to, you know, my first entree into learning more about politics. UW has a lot of service learning opportunities, might tie in very nicely with, with, with those. So, but that's, that's, that's where I am. But I'm not sure I'm voting on this, but just wanted to add those, wanted to add those comments.
Appreciate that, Alder Tischler. Any other comments? Vice President Curry, go ahead.
Thank you. I didn't know my hand up the first time. I'll be honest, I'm a little conflicted just due to my work with interns in my daytime job and supervising them. While I agree with everything Alder Tischler and previous Alders said about the opportunities and, and exposing folks, especially young folks to the council and the work, it is a lot of onboarding and work in the beginning to get someone up and rolling. And when talking about capacity and having, you know, another set of eyes or someone to be able to do some of the things to increase capacity, for instance, I guess I go back to my experience and it will vary, I think, Alder by Alder, based on, you know, volume of things that are happening in the district, personality and communication styles. There's just a lot in the air. And I think I'm conflicted because I haven't yet seen the program rollout and am more interested in seeing that and being able to maybe provide guidance or things in there around some of those concerns. And I've missed questions, but I wanted to, I had a question about what if Alders don't utilize interns in this way? And would they be able to utilize that money for their Alder accounts? And I see Karen nodding her head, so it seems like the money would still be of use, which was another concern of mine. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I was nodding because I, I, I could help. But I, I actually, I, from the reading of this amendment, it does seem that the 750 would be dedicated to supporting interns. I wanted to add one thing if I could on this. Is that all right? I just want to, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I think I'm pretty much done with my comment.
If it's okay, I just wanted to, to just say that I, we, we will be, because of the 250 that are in there, we're building this program. So we're already, we're already on that, that particular path. I just, unless something happens, I guess something could happen between now and then. But I just want to make that clear that the program itself is still being developed. So I'll appreciate your feedback when we, we get that time. Thank you.
And that will be an item for our future CCEC meeting. Vice President Curry, you're welcome to take the floor again if you wanted to add anything more. You're good. All right. Alder Madison, go ahead.
Thank you. I am in a retail store, so can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to add my two cents, also to echo a lot of what Alder Tischler shared. But as someone who manages, I think we have three alternate, our interns right now in my nine to five. And those interns are high school and college students. And I believe they get between $1,000 and $1,500 for the year. And one thing I just want to say is I'm more than willing to use myself to help folks flesh out what it looks like in the future, whether it's one-on-one, whether it's part of a committee or just working with folks in a coffee house in the evening, whatever. But I do want to say that I, I, I encourage folks to think about their interns more project-based, not trying to help them manage like they're just continuous work tasks daily. So maybe it is, we're, you know, replying to certain kinds of projects. Like if there's a development happening and the intern is just responsible for managing communications and sending out things for that development. So I would just encourage you to support it because it is helpful, it does give folks experience, especially interns and young people of color who are very much, sometimes just don't have that entryway into the kinds of spaces that we are all presently sitting in. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster, go ahead.
I was gonna make a motion to recommend place on file.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Alder Figaro call with second. Alder Tischler, if you'd like to speak. Where, where we have discussion still, so you're welcome to, to, to contribute more.
Yeah, I just like the idea Alder Madison had with, with the project base. I'm wondering if there's any way that Alders can combine the funds so that, that a, an intern could, could receive more money and that would also give the opportunity for Alders to collaborate on a project that might spread across several districts, so.
Yeah, I think based on, you know, I, I think we, we can certainly explore that more in the future. You know, I think Karen had mentioned that that was one of the things that she was definitely trying. Um, you know, I think Karen had mentioned that that was one of the things that she was, um, definitely trying to, um, think about when they were looking to put together the parameters of, uh, the program with the existing money, if additional money would be added. Um, if we don't do it now, um, this certainly can come back, um, if there's money available, um, to, to do it in the future, um, add more money to the pot. Uh, Alder Figaro Cole, go ahead.
Um, two questions. One, if I leave the meeting, do you still have quorum? I'm supposed to be in parks right now, so I'm kind of busy tasking here and I can do. Uh, yeah. Do you have quorum if I leave to do?
Yeah, we would have quorum.
Okay, perfect. Again, so thank you. And then, um, second, I mean, this is, I, I'm a bit, um, not conflicted, but still confused because what we just discussed there is what I thought we were doing. I thought we were taking $5,000 to allocate for a program on, for, um, interns for council, not this individualized thing. Or, you know, like we will have potentially 20 interns with $150 each, which doesn't, which doesn't make any sense, to be honest with you. So I support the alternative of putting this on file until you guys, until the council office, that they, eh, the opportunity to put a program together and vet it and figure out how we want to go about this. But initially that, when I first supported this idea, I was in the, on the mindset that we will group this money to get people opportunities to come to council and learn from us, not this idea that now we're here and that is a each person gets money for an intern. So that's why I will not be supporting the original, um, um, request, but I'll support it, put it on file until, until later time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, any other discussion? The motion on the table is to place this on file. Um, I'm going to ask Karen to call the roll.
Okay. Vice President Curry?
No.
Alder Bennett is not here. Alder Conklin?
Come back to me, please.
Okay. Um, Alder Figaro Cole?
So this is to vote to put it on file?
Correct.
Thank you.
Alder Foster?
Aye.
Foster, aye. Alder Heck?
Aye.
Okay. Um, Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Okay. So with, uh, we've got four ayes and one no. President Furman, I think in this case, you don't, you don't vote because it wouldn't change the outcome. Right?
Okay. All right. Um, move on to the next item on our agenda, um, which is, um, uh, will hopefully be incredibly quick. A legislative file 75158, poet lawyer, uh, request where poet, poet, uh, poetry, uh, recitation, uh, scheduled for the 2023 common council meeting, um, March 7th, June 6th, September 5th, December 5th. Are there any questions, comments, concerns? Thank you, Alder Figaro Cole. Have a good evening. Um, can I get a motion for this item?
Uh, I like the motion to approve the poet's schedule for 2023.
Ald, Alder Foster, is that a second?
Yep.
All right. Um, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll assume anonymous consent and move on to 75119. And I do want to point out, um, that, um, Debbie is with us this evening and, uh, sat through, um, the discussion up to this point. Debbie, thank you so much for doing that. Um, I know this is a topic that Karen asked you to come and be available, uh, to, um, either answer questions or contribute. And so I just wanted to thank you for being here this evening, um, and let, and make it clear to everybody that you're here to, um, uh, answer questions and possibly offer feedback. And so, um, this item, um, as Alder Foster pointed out, um, is on our agenda, um, to talk about, um, one possible use of the, um, alder pay, um, uh, increase that was in the budget, um, in order to, um, lessen the load on alders. Um, Alder Foster, would you like to talk about this a little bit? I know you and I kind of went back and forth on this to, I mean, you introduced it a little bit in your intern discussion, but, um, you know, I, I, um, hopefully you can provide the group with some things to think about, um, and, and talk about.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thanks. Um, so, um, as I mentioned earlier, um, I, I, I've been, I think, really, really focused on trying to improve conditions for alders, um, on the common council to make the job, uh, easier, more manageable. Um, and, um, when the, um, the, the ordinance, um, didn't get the super majority needed to pass to increase alder pay, which I was, uh, obviously very supportive of, um, my thoughts turned to, um, as I mentioned before, this idea that, um, well, we need to, we need to put energy into making the role of alder easier. And, um, I, that is something that I support. Um, I, I did not support that as a, um, replacement for actually paying alders for doing the work that, um, that they do. But I, as, as I thought through, well, what would that actually look like? The number one thing that came up for me, um, is increasing the, the level of administrative support that's available to alders. Um, I think of, um, representatives in the state house, for example, um, who all have, um, multiple staff and interns, um, per each representative to really help manage, in that case, actively manage their email inbox and really be that first line of, um, contact for, uh, for constituent concerns. Um, even though I, I believe they have a much lower volume of constituent, um, emails and concerns than, um, city of Madison alders do. And so, um, I, I really started thinking about what would that look like? What would it take? Had some initial conversations with Karen. And, um, I'm, I'm really interested in others' feedback. I didn't want to put a pro- act, a proposal forward, um, without hearing from other folks and, and really ensuring that it's something that had some broader support. But, um, you know, as I reflect on, on my kind of three and a half years in this role, um, one of the things that really stands out for me is the amount of time that's required to answer emails and return phone calls from constituents. Um, probably 85 to 90% of the time, um, for things that somebody else could help with, um, at least on that first pass. Um, so, um, you know, I, it's sort of along with this, I've been an active supporter of working towards, uh, a 311 system that, you know, if that were in place, could serve this function where we could theoretically have, uh, a, a system that's really readily available for residents to call or email or text, to get all the answers they need to questions, to report issues, to get help with some, you know, very small issue, um, that I think we all understand today instead is often coming to us individually as alders. Debbie has, um, done some of this work, um, for myself and for other alders in the past. Um, but it's, it's been sort of rather ad hoc and I know at least personally, I have not, um, I have, I have certainly not given the, um, the bulk of that work over there. And I've really tried to manage, um, the majority of it on my own. So responding directly to constituents, as I've learned more and more about, uh, you know, which city staff to turn to, you know, directly forwarding emails there, um, but then running into issues with not having those staff respond and me getting stuck in the middle and having residents contact me again, um, or, or simply just being available via phone to answer the calls when they come in, um, getting voicemails, calling people back. So, um, my thought with this is that we could potentially use the, the money that was avail- that's available in the budget to hire an additional council staff person, um, that really could be dedicated to doing, uh, much higher level volume of this sort of work, um, potentially with a little bit more structure around it, where we could have alders, um, really feel comfortable and confident to just forward, um, you know, emails that, um, that somebody else could help with. Um, and, and have some processes in place to make sure that the resident feels good about it, that the alder's still in the loop, um, as, as makes sense. Um, but really be that, that sort of first line of contact. And in a way, maybe start to pilot this functionality of what a 311 system might look like. So that, I guess in a nutshell, is what I'm thinking, um, at this point. But I know, you know, every alder's experience is different. Um, maybe some alders, you know, don't think that would be super helpful. Um, so really just wanted to kind of open it up for discussion here and, and hear from others about whether they think, um, that would be a significant help to alders in the future, if we had a kind of a dedicated resource to really, um, really be on point and take charge to, um, to, to work directly with residents that are contacting their alders.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Um, do others have thoughts, uh, or possibly even questions of staff about this? Alder Ritterver, go ahead.
Um, so I thought that I remembered that last year in the budget, we had set aside money for the 311 program and that that was really the purpose of this, was to have a program that was a central place for residents to ask the questions that they're often asking us. What happened to that?
Um, we haven't had an update about the 311 program, um, uh, for a few, few months. Um, that's, it's a long-term project. Um, so, you know, we, we can certainly get an update on that. I'm happy to, uh, that's actually a question that an alder asked for our leadership, uh, meeting on Friday. Um, it's, it's going to take years to put something like that in place, to be quite honest. Um, and so, you know, I do think ultimately we absolutely need a 311 program, um, but that's not happening anytime soon, to be quite honest. Um, and so I think as Alder Foster pointed out, this individual could be somebody that ends up going over to the 311 program. Um, but in the meantime, um, you know, could act as, uh, you know, further support. Other, other discussion? Alder Foster, go ahead. Alder Heck?
Thanks. Um, I'm thinking about how something like this could work, uh, and struggling honestly, uh, it, I, I, you know, I, we haven't really thought about it and, and Alder Foster admits that, you know, it's, it's really just, we're, we're looking for ideas, but, uh, it, it, it seems like it would, i- in, in this situation, given our current technological capabilities and such, that it would be an individual alder who would be making a decision, I guess. Okay. Am I going to forward this request to this person or not? Or am I going to take care of it myself? And, uh, to me, even that step is annoying. And, uh, uh, I, I, I guess it could save a lot of time. Uh, but, you know, so many of the requests that take, uh, a, a lot of bandwidth, I, 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 I think, uh, this, this person, let's say, would have a lot of trouble unless they were somebody as experienced as Debbie, who knows a lot of answers to these types of questions. And I think it would take, uh, years for someone to build up the knowledge base to, to act as a form of 311 or a Debbie. And, uh, it, it, it might not be worth the effort, but I don't really have a better answer of how do we, how do we provide more support for alders in this arena? So those are my first thoughts. I'm just thinking aloud.
Alder Heck, you realize we asked new, new alders to figure that rollout pretty quickly too, though, right? Vice President Curry?
Not Debbie. Um, I, I know we're in like comment, I, I, I'm not sure if it's appropriate, if, uh, it's easier to ask questions of Debbie and then even Karen, because essentially this, uh, role would fall under Karen's supervision, or is that going to be part of?
Oh, yeah, that, that's free flowing. You're, you're welcome to engage anybody you wish. Uh, they don't have to answer you, but you're welcome to engage anybody you wish.
Sure. So thank you. Um, thanks and hi Debbie and Karen. Um, is it easier to ask questions? Or would you kind of like to take us through your thoughts about this opportunity?
Go ahead and ask any questions you have. I'll do my best to answer.
Um, so considering, I think, what President Furman just said regarding, we do expect alders to jump into this and assume knowledge very quickly, but you've also been around a very long time and seen different alders come and go. Um, how do you see this supporting maybe some of your capacity of doing and holding some of the things depending on who's in office? Um, and, I mean, it's putting you on the spot, but, uh, is it, are you excited, nervous, conflicted?
I certainly understand that the need is there for it. I do agree with Alder Heck that the alder is still going to have to go into their email or voicemail messages and decide which ones to send. So it doesn't take all the work off of the alder. Um, but I do know that it takes a lot of time because I see the calls that, and emails that I get and how much time they take. So I know it does consume a part of an alder's day. Um, the one thing that I would mention is I, I do have alders that come to me and ask me who certain questions should be referred to. And they do that, I know, because they like to be the one to then provide the answer to their constituent and kind of have that personal touch with it, rather than just having me take it over. But again, that's going to vary from alder to alder. And there's, it's just difficult to predict who's going to want what and how much they will utilize the service. I know that's a terribly vague answer. I'm sorry.
Well, that helps. Um, okay. Karen has a couple of questions for you. And, oh, I was going to be on mute. I think this may be also like being, um, the council vice president and being just naturally connecting more with you in that role, um, conversations happening, like for instance, about moving offices. And, um, we've already increased office staff more so than historically from, currently we have five more positions? And this would be five, including yours? Six. Okay. So six total, including you. Um, kind of same question that I had for Debbie of, you know, excitement, nervousness, conflicted. But also, um, as you have been onboarding, most recently the community engagement strategist and then needing to rehire for the legislative analyst assist, you know, you know what I'm talking about. Um, do you see opportunities to weave some of this in? So like, for instance, I know Larissa took over doing the, um, weekly summary that, that sent out. Um, yeah.
Thank you. Yes. So, right. So we have, in theory, five right now. We had five for a moment, people. Um, and as you mentioned, and I've mentioned in my update coming up in a little bit, we're, we're unfortunately hiring again for that fifth person. Um, and then this would be six. Uh, I know in our new space, which we're hoping to be able to access by the end of the year, beginning of next year, they're not making promises, but, you know, that we're crossing fingers for that, that we will have enough workspaces for six people. We did add some extra workspaces when, um, when we were building the plans so that we could account for some growth. Um, as it stands right now, Debbie can attest to the, uh, state of the, of the office. It's, um, we all have hybrid schedules because it's, it's, uh, quite tight. And, um, even with two people in the office, somebody usually goes into the conference room to take a, take a meeting, et cetera. So our current situation, um, space-wise is very tight. I, I couldn't imagine, uh, fitting a sixth person, especially a person with phone duty. Um, I think we'd have to really think hard about how to, I mean, I, I really, we would, we would probably have to take, take away the alder lounge. And there may be some expense, um, related to that. So I have some trepidation because of the space, um, partially because of the space. Um, and then another, I'm conflicted as well because I don't know how often folks are in the enviable, enviable position of being offered additional support, right? So I certainly don't want to sound unappreciative of, of such a thing. Cause I think it's, it's wonderful that you're thinking of, of, um, how to enhance the office. So, um, but, uh, we're in a, we're in a strange position where we've got new people. We had two new people. You know, they're coming, uh, now we have the one coming up only on three months and, um, and then we'll hopefully be able to bring another one up. And, and then we'll hopefully be able to bring another one onboard and then get them up to speed. And I, I can say that right now, I just don't know what our, our complete capacity is, because we haven't really been able to push, push the limits of, of what we can do as folks are, are getting on-boarded. So I have a lot of, I, I do, I do have a big question mark. I, I, I imagine that we will have some, some additional, significant additional capacity between those two new positions as they get their feet under them. So I'm in a, I, I can't, you know, if we were an established team, I could tell you, you know? But unfortunately, we're just not established yet. In terms of, let's see, I think you had, there was one other thing.
Looking at any opportunities if you're establishing staff to weave in some of the topics that have been brought in.
I do think so, actually. That's one thing, um, I had done for a previous alder in my previous role. I, and then I think, I think even as I continued on in this role, I had received a number of constituent issues, and I, I helped shepherd them through to the correct staff and make sure things, and then follow up on things and so on and so forth. And so I can see the legislative analyst being able to pick up some of that work. I know Debbie picks it up as it comes along. I think the emails in particular, I feel more confident that we can weave more of that into our existing, if we are fully staffed, our existing work. If you are discussing, thinking about some kind of a central call line, I think it's maybe, it's a little, maybe a little more, little more challenging, a little more, I'm not as quick to make a statement on handle, you know, folding that in. So I guess I, I'm a, you know, I'm not, I just, calls, I'm just not sure yet. One other concern we have is that, we've discussed this possibilities and thinking about these sorts of things and, and what, what could, what could work? And one of the concerns we have is that it seems from council to council and alder to alder, it varies drastically as to the type of support the alder wants from staff in, in these particular areas. And I, I, I want to make sure that if we do build a position, that we build a position that makes sense, right? It has an internal logic to it, obviously, and has, has a, I, I, I want to make sure that even if 3-1-1 comes or something changes, or this, this next group is really independent and is not interested, or something, you know, I want to make sure that that position, that that person who would take that position would be, you know, it would, that the position would make sense, you know, from a, from a retention and employer, you know, perspective, I want that to make sense. It's kind of, I mean, I'm really happy to hear your thoughts, though. I was looking forward to this, because I really would love to hear everybody's ideas on this issue.
Thank you. All right, everybody, I'm taking up so much time. I have one, like, final question, and it's very much more on the spot. Considering all the conversation and, you know, experience and knowledge you have in your roles, and then balancing like council office stuff and alder stuff, are there any ideas that haven't been thrown out on the table that you would like us to consider as part of this conversation? Or just with having increased funds to do some of the things that we know need to be done?
I do have some thoughts. I don't know if Debbie, do you have any thoughts on that one? Nothing springs to mind at the moment. Okay. So there are some things I'm thinking about that I have on the horizon, and, excuse me, and that, it may or may not be appropriate for this discussion, but I'll just throw that out there since you, since you raised the issue. I think we are going to be doing a lot more with BCC admin support and training, both of alders and BCC staff, members, et cetera, et cetera. And I, I do think that there very well may be a need at some point for additional staff support in those areas, because if the council continues down the path that it's kind of set in motion, there will be, there will be need for, for support on those things. So that's the one thing that I'm really kind of keeping an eye out for. It's not maybe tomorrow, but it's, it's not, I don't think it's that far away, unless something drastically changes with how we handle all of those things. So I'll throw that out there.
Thank you, Vice President Curry. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks, President Furman. Karen, I guess to, maybe a follow-up to kind of that last point, and part of what I'm trying to tee up here is, I guess, in a way, a broader conversation about additional administrative support. I, I hear you, you know, describing, we've got sort of new positions, we're still, you know, just barely had it fully staffed and then not, and, and, you know, maybe if and when that's all done, there will be some capacity. I don't hear you saying there, you expect there will likely be capacity for all 20 alders to be able to forward all emails that would apply or voicemails. And maybe there's some other duties, including BCC support work, that you could use additional support for. I think we know all of this sort of stuff takes an eternity. So what we're talking about right now is, should we consider a budget amendment to create a new position, a new administrative support position within the council office that could offer, you know, sort of higher level support in the things that we talked about, but also could, you know, could cover other things like BCC admin support, et cetera? You know, I think of the TFOGS recommendations and what we learned from other cities, and the amount of administrative support staff that other common councils have across the nation, and even with our new, new staff, we're still very, very slim. So, you know, I'm, I guess, I don't think we need to have everything completely laid out before we decided to move forward with increasing our administrative support within the council office, but, you know, you got the kind of best take on that, I think, of any of us at this point. If the ask from the common council was, we would like the common council office staff to be able to support all 20 alders to the extent that they want for forwarding any and all constituent emails to get the support that's needed, and have a phone number that is published for all alders that want it, that would be answered by council staff and would, and the council staff would be able to help those constituents whenever possible, and if needed, schedule time with the alder to speak directly with the alder. What, what would that take from your perspective? Do you feel confident that you could try doing that with current staffing levels? Or would you need additional staff in order to, to accomplish that?
I, yeah, so I think that's a good question. I just, let me get, I want to think, I'm thinking about a couple of things, and I also want Debbie to weigh in on this. I feel like this phone issue is, is where I get a little bit, I get a little bit, I don't know, I don't want to say stuck, but I feel like we need to think through the, you know, what this will mean for us, both, even physically in the office, you know? I, yeah, that's one thing I was thinking about. If the council comes and says, we want all of this, we want these additional services, we want this enhanced support, to the extent that you're saying, you're talking about all 20 alders, it sounds like, and I, it's hard to not, without knowing what emails you have, but if you're talking about half of your emails, three-fourths of your emails, times 20 plus, instead of getting calls directly, you get calls, we, we, you get calls to the office, we take voicemails, pass them back to you, i- in the cases where we can't handle them, you know, they, they want to talk to their alder. Yeah, it's, it's really, and then I think you mentioned scheduling as well. If, if we, if we times 20, I think that that's fair to say that we would need additional support. And then we will need to build out the office, even unfortunate, the timing is, is difficult, because I hate to spend money on building out the office when we're building a whole new office. But, yeah. Debbie, I wanted you to, to just weigh in a little bit about this phone issue. I know we had talked internally about how many times the people calling want to talk to their alder, so there will be a, a situation, most likely, it sounds like, where we will be taking voicemail, taking messages and then handing them back to the alders, which I'm not sure is exactly the, everybody's, I'm not sure. Anyway, I just, if you have any thoughts on, on any of this, Debbie, please weigh in. Yeah, there, there is a certain percentage of people who call, who even if I can solve their problem, or someone in another city agency can solve their issues, they still want to talk to their alder. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what that percentage is. I don't think it's particularly high, probably less than 25%, but there would be some of that. And also, I agree with what Karen said, that if we were going to be asked to supply the level of support that Alder Foster just described for all 20 alders, I do think it would take additional staff, admin support staff in the office.
Think, thanks both of you. I guess I would just say, I think, I mean, there's, there's a lot of opportunity to talk through in more detail, kind of how this would work, you know, what would exactly be in versus out, but just a couple of things, as I've thought through them. Number one, I would love tomorrow to swap out my alder phone number that's published on the website and have a number that is answered by council staff. And I would say, in my experience, I'm guessing it is probably at least 80% of the calls that I get, the people would be thrilled if somebody were able to answer the call when they were calling, because I, I can very rarely do that, in all honesty. So they're going to go to voicemail for me. And, and yes, there will be some folks that are going to be insistent on talking with me, and I would really love support for having them, getting, you know, 15 minutes set on my calendar and where we can do that, because the number of times that I called somebody back from a voicemail, and then I have to leave a voicemail, we do that sort of thing. It, it really is for the, for the, for a relatively small volume of phone calls that I get, it's a, an order and amount of work, and I think it would be a tremendous help to not have to manage that as an alder. I think with, you know, with this not being considered a full-time job and most alders having other commitments throughout the day, I know there's a lot of folks that cannot be available to answer their alder phone when folks are calling. So I, I do, I would love to see that prioritized, number one. And number two, I, I think I get Alder Heck what you're describing around, you know, sort of how useful would this be in relation to emails? You know, what I am imagining and anticipating is, you know, right now, if I, if I were to ask for support on, on something, you know, I also want to make sure that the resident is feeling like they're not getting dumped on somebody else, you know, it's important that they're feeling like there's a connection with their alder, et cetera. I feel confident that we could create a system where it would be both super easy for alders to do this, in, in an ideal scenario for me, it would literally be forwarding this to an individual or a mailbox or whatever it is, without even having to put anything in there. I mean, literally from my phone or wherever else, I read the email, I see that it's something that could be handled by this person, I forward it, and that person understands completely what the expectations are, and they're able to respond to the constituent, put me on copy and say, oh, good afternoon, you know, whoever, I'm helping Alder Foster with this, I'm going to connect you with this person, et cetera, et cetera. And I think we can accomplish in a really, in a way that's very low effort for the alder and very high touch and high customer service for residents, and make this happen. I also think it opens up the door to, at a later date, pilot, having a more centralized thing. We could publish on all of our webpages, sure, here's the email to talk directly with Alder Foster, or if you have a general city concern, you can, you can get a faster response by just emailing here instead. So I, I think there's ways in the future that this could be incorporated. And I guess, lastly, I'll just say, I just have zero doubts that if we added another position to the council office, that it would be worthwhile for the common council, and that we would find plenty of work to keep all of our council staff busy, both in terms of constituent contact and in any other duties that we're already expecting of staff that there just simply isn't capacity for. So I, I guess I'll just leave it there for the moment. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Tischler.
Yeah, actually, I just want to echo a lot of what Alder Foster said. It's kind of in the, the same, same mindset with, it's, it's, it's being available during the day, having a person be able to pick up the phone when people call, but then also it's just scheduling a time when you, when to, to be able to get, to get back to, to somebody. And I also, you know, my day job, I'm, I'm, I'm support staff, so I, I, I feel the, the pain, I know it's, I know it's, 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 it's not, it's not easy feeling you're, I mean, during the day, on, on call 24, 24/7, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that, just, it's just, it's that constant conflicting with, do I pick up, do I pick up, I have two phones, I pick up the red phone or the, the blue phone? And so, having, having a person on the, on the other end to answer for somebody, I think for a number of constituents in District 11, I think it would be a, a nice extra touch, but I realize that that's, that's asking, asking a lot of, of current staff, so having, having more all-in support. I actually have to run and get some food, I haven't eaten yet in a couple hours, so, but I thank everybody for giving me the opportunity to talk, and I will look forward to seeing everybody in the future.
Thanks for joining us, Alder Tischler, appreciate it. All right, I put up my hand, because I wanted to get in the queue and talk, so I just want to make some, some, some thoughts about this. It, it's, it's interesting to talk to Alder Foster about this, because his, his experience with constituent services, quite frankly, is different than mine. I don't get the volume he gets, to be quite honest. There are emails I get that very easily can be taken care of by, you know, a support staff opposed to me, where they, you know, they're asking me something simple about, you know, is it rent assistance, or when their trash is going to be picked up, or, you know, why, why didn't their street get snow plowed, et cetera, that, that as alder, I don't need to do. As, as Alder Foster suggests something like this, and I'm, I'm supportive of something like this, I want to point out, this isn't going to benefit me. I'm, 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 I only got a few more months in this job, but I do recognize, when you do this job, we need, we need to make this job more accessible. We've had a ton of talks about this through TFOGS here at CCEC, proposals that have been in front of the council, but at, at the end of the day, alders have a limited amount of time. It's not a full-time job, it's part-time. It takes a lot of time, a lot of effort to put in, into this job. I just think constituent service questions really should be low on the list of where alders are spending time, when those questions can easily be answered by support staff. Don't get me wrong, if somebody wants to talk to you about, you know, a piece of legislation, you're going to want to engage, you're going to want to talk to them, but if I have a limited amount of time, I, you know, or an alder has a limited amount of time, I'd rather than be looking at the agendas, understanding what items they need to understand more, talking to staff about stuff, coming up with new legislation, which is an incredibly time-consuming job, and working with staff on that, et cetera. So it really comes down to, you know, I, I recognize there, again, there, each district is different, but anything we can do to support alders, for them to be able to focus more on the legislative part of the job and, and get support, I think, would be helpful. I don't know what that looks like, I don't know what the system looks like, and so I appreciated the discussion tonight, but I really do think, we need to be thinking of, of ways to make this job more accessible. Not everybody is available 40 hours a week to do this job, and we certainly don't get paid enough to do this job 40 hours a week. So, you know, the, whatever stuff we can legitimately outsource, we should be looking at doing that. And I think some of these constituent things, and being able to, as Alder Foster said, forward certain things off, even keeping track of that takes a lot of time. I'm sure, you know, alders know, like, you know, somebody mails you about something and a staff member doesn't get back to you and you have to follow up, that, that, that's a lot of time that you're, that alders end up having to spend, or in some cases, alders don't even bother. They have, you have districts where literally this stuff just gets ignored, where it all, you know, somebody sends something to their alder and the alder just doesn't have time, and, and they ignore it. And so the fact that we have such different levels of engagement from alders and, and from constituents, anything we can do to simplify, that'd be great. I absolutely love and appreciate Alder Vitterver bringing up the 3-1-1 and what the heck's going on with that. We will get an update, but every time I've seen any scope of that, I mean, we're talking about, you know, a very, very, very large, substantial investment that I desperately think we need to make as a city, but just isn't going to happen overnight. And so I think this is a good step towards making this job more equitable. Alder Heck.
Thanks. Your kind of summary of the situation there, President Furman, indicates why you're president and I'm not. You did a good job. I, I appreciated what you had to say and, and also- I, I appreciated what you had to say and, and also what Alder Foster had to say, and I'm just going to briefly describe what I receive and how I would envision this potentially helping me. I totally get that it could help some Alders, but I think it would not help me. I actually get very few, not very few, but not that many requests that I think staff could easily answer. I get theses and, 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 you know, very complicated input and perhaps constituents have been enabled to engaging in that manner, but I wouldn't want to ask staff to, to take care of the majority of the, of the contacts that I get. And I actually get very, not, not too many phone calls because, partially because my voicemail message says, if you want a quicker response, email me. And so I think a fair number of people take that hint, not all, but, but it, that kind of leads me to what, what you were talking about, President Furman, that it just varies so much by district and by Alder, so, and, and whatever we come up with, and I do think, as Alder Foster said, it could be really great for some Alders. You know, we, we have to recognize that it's not, it's gonna be very difficult to provide this service for every district that's, that's gonna take some big load off, but I still think it's worth thinking about. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Heck. Are there any other questions, thoughts, comments? Karen, go ahead.
So I, hearing folks, you know, honestly, I think hearing folks describe the types of calls and emails they get is really helpful, to give us kind of a window into what's, you know, what we're talking about here. Because that's another possibility, and, and I don't know, for example, if it's five districts that, that, that take up the bulk of this for, let's say, you know, do those five districts provide enough work, you know what I mean, for a coherent PD, for someone to do that work? Maybe, maybe. And, and I wish there was a way, I wish there was a, I wish we could tap somebody with the amount of experience that Debbie has for like a pilot, to see what we're dealing with, you know? But I just can't come up with, because unfortunately, the administrative, the A-team, the, you know, the, the float team, they're always really busy around election time. And there's, and there's, you know, because I'd be the first person, I think, you know, maybe we could get one of, one of them to, to pilot this and see what we're talking about for volume, but unfortunately, I think they're probably not even gonna be available until after the election. But I just, I wish there was some way for us to get a better handle on what we're, what we're talking about in the aggregate. Just, just some thoughts to throw out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Heck.
Sorry to speak so much. I was just going to say, Karen, that what Alder Foster mentioned about, you know, potentially this person doing BCC admin support and things might provide, you know, a rationale for, for doing something bigger, but, so there, there are possibilities, I think. Thanks.
Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. I guess I'm just gonna kind of put this question out to the world here, but, I mean, I, I'm happy to, you know, ask, ask to put a budget amendment together, forward it on. I think, you know, that is obviously a high threshold to get that approved. If there's not, you know, a lot of support for it at this time, I don't want to waste anybody's time with it. And if, if I'm, if I'm not gonna do that, and if we aren't gonna, you know, approve such a thing, then I guess I am, I would ask our Chief of Staff, I mean, what, what do you recommend? How do we get from where we're at to being able to answer these questions better? Because I don't, I mean, to me, it's just 100% clear, this is, this is the best thing the city could do for me right now in my role, is to, for me to be able to get support on these things. And I'm, I feel confident that the person that comes after me, at least in my district, is gonna be in a very similar situation, and I know there are other Alders today that are in this situation that would really benefit from it. So how do we get from where we're at to, I guess, number one, identifying what the actual expected workload would be, and whether it's something that, that our current office staffing can handle, or if we need to advocate for an additional position? Because I don't, to me, it just doesn't make a lot of sense for us to do nothing, and, you know, just sit here, and then all the, all the Alders today, all the incoming Alders are just gonna basically be in the same boat that I've been in, that the rest of us have been in. So, I mean, do you have thoughts about how we do work on a pilot, how we work on getting data collection to answer some of these questions, so we can make an informed decision if people are not feeling confident to add a position at this point?
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's a really good point, and I, I think we could start out, I don't want to commit anybody to anything until I have a conversation internally, but one possibility would be to start out to, to reach out to each of the Alders, have a conversation, you know, about what they're, what they're dealing with. Get, try to get some, some sense of scope, and also how they, would they take a bit, you know, if this was in place when they started, would they be, would they be happy to take advantage of it, you know? So that's the first thing that I, I guess would make sense, and that's something that we could do pretty, pretty briskly. I don't know, Debbie, what do you think about, about that, or do you have any other ideas? Because I don't, I, I mean, of course, I'm tempted to give it a trial run, but then the problem is that, that the phone calls all come to Debbie, and then Debbie is inundated potentially with phone calls. And so that, that's why I'm hesitating on that path, because I'm worried about, I don't know what to expect, and Debbie has other duties. So that's why I'm not just jumping right to, like, let's try it. Debbie, do you have any thoughts about how to get us somewhere?
Well, how long are you thinking of for a pilot?
I mean, that's a great question. We're in a strange spot right now, because we're, you know, we're gearing up for orientation if we're onboarding, and we're spending all of our time, you know, our extra, I don't know what to call it, time when we're not on the other tasks, we're, we're spending on dealing with all of that. And so, you know, if I wasn't thinking about that, if we were in a, you know, if we weren't in that situation, I thought, you know, a month, you know, a month of, of trial maybe would be a, a good amount, and we would know a lot probably in that month, especially if, if we got half the council willing to, to send us their emails and to, and to set up the phone with them, right? But I don't want us to overcommit, I know that's always a problem, right? We wanna, we wanna get you what you, what you need. But, but yeah, President Furman, you might be able to help us with that.
Yeah, and I want to be careful about putting, continuing to put Karen and Debbie on the spot, so I'm probably going to, to suggest that we have some, some further offline discussions about it. Alder Foster is pretty in tune with the feedback he's hearing here tonight, as am I, and I think, I think we could probably have a much smaller group talk about this and see if something makes sense. I think we're in an awkward period too, where we're about to, you know, literally flip 50% of the council. I mean, you know, we're gonna have all these new members coming, and so there is an opportunity to establish new standards, if we wanted to. But, you know, I, I, I think I want to hold off putting Debbie and Karen on the spot much more. But Alder Foster, is there more you wanted to ask or say?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and, you know, certainly not trying to put anybody on the spot, and would, would be happy to follow up in this conversation offline. I, the last thing I'll just put out there is, I think another way to consider it is, I don't think we have to go whole hog, even for a month or whatever else, we don't have to have all 20 doing it at once. I would be the first one to volunteer myself to, to start forwarding things, you know, see what it would take to get a, you know, republish a different phone number, and, you know, we could try it with one Alder, or two, or three. So I think there's ways to, to manage it at a slower scale, that we could then try and extrapolate a little bit, so, but we can, we can talk a little bit more about it offline. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Vice President Curry.
Thank you. I was actually gonna ask, or like, respond to Alder Foster's kind of, what are solutions? Is this something that we could just pick up later? Do you, because we are turning over, and like, for instance, Alder Heck, President Furman, Alder Foster won't be here past April, would it be more appropriate to like formally refer, or like make sure that we talk about this before? Like, because I think there's, for me personally, I don't feel there's enough to make me comfortable to vote this in right now, but I do think it's worthwhile reconvening or re, my words are terrible, talking about this later when we know who the next cohort will be. Hopefully by then, office staff will be fully staffed, and obviously onboarding will be tailoring off instead of going up. And I feel like it'd be more appropriate to reconvene around a time. So I guess I'm seeking advice on what would be the best steps to make sure we don't lose sight of the topic.
Sure, so I, I mean, I'll give you my two cents. I mean, I think, you know, we, we have an opportunity now where there's some money in the council budget that we could allocate towards this, and that's, that is a unique opportunity, that, that's worth noting. You know, new councils certainly can talk about this. I think you're gonna run into a situation where you're gonna have Alders that come into the job, be in the job for two weeks and assume that they have all the answers. I will tell you, I've been in this job for over four years, and I don't have all the answers. I don't know how, how to do things, you know, radically differently or radically better. So at some point, you know, we, we just, we need to try things and figure things out. And so, you know, it certainly can wait, I think that'll probably wind up being the case. I'm not sure there are 15 votes for this idea anyway, especially based on some of the feedback we're hearing this evening. I, you know, I just think we need to continue to forever and ever talk about how to make this job more equitable and, and work better for Alders and the community. As I said, there are people that just get ignored by Alders because the Alders don't have the bandwidth for it. And, you know, we, we need to do better. So I probably didn't give you an answer, Vice President Curry, but that's sort of what I'm thinking. I don't think there's a right time. It could be now, it could be later. It's, it's the will of the body at some point.
Yes, I'm sorry, let me confirm, in terms of, this has been a topic on CCEC's agenda and we're an advisory, would it, how to not lose sight of it, like, should it be placed on, like, should it be referred to a date, like?
There's no, there's no action item. I mean, we probably could, could just refer this to another date, and then, you know, the, the next president can decide whether or not they want to bring it up for discussion. I'm sure, we could certainly entertain that, that's not a bad idea, if that's the direction we want to go. But, you know, we can, I can also talk to whoever the next president is when that's the case, say, hey, you know, would you please consider this if we don't take any action? But I think, you know, all these ideas, obviously, you know, we should never stop trying to make this job better, even if we don't, don't accomplish it. I was reading an Alder's campaign material, and they were still trying to get the three-year terms. And I, you know, I'm glad somebody is trying to continue to do that, because I think that's, it's worth, you know, continuing these threads.
Thank you for clarification, and I see Alder Foster and Alder Madison's hands up, but I'd, I'd be willing to make a recommendation to refer it, and also, like, I guess it would be to refer to the next CCEC, but also, I don't know if we could ask that representatives of this CCEC could provide that presentation to the new CCEC? That would be what I would like to see happen, but I'll, I'll wait to also see what Alder Madison and Foster have to say.
Thank you, Vice President Curry. Alder Madison.
Thank you. So I just, let me, oh, I was trying to figure out how to lower my hand. Okay, so, I just wanted, so I'm just gonna be transparent. So as a new, new Alder, you know, I'm like two months, three weeks or so in, and I definitely, when I got started, because I'm a process checklist sort of person, I definitely, those first couple of weeks, spent a lot of time hitting up Debbie and Karen, just the office period, for just, just process things, because I didn't get like a, you know, a stack of documents and say, hey, this is how you do this, and this is where you go for that. So I, you know, sent them a bunch of random emails for things. Now today, I mostly reach out when I need to make sure I am reaching out to the correct staff person. For the most part, I'm able to manage it. I may be 20 or so emails behind, but when I scroll through, nothing is like emerging, you know, emergencies or whatever. And so, so I want to say that, and then I want to say, the reason I raise my hand is because when you all are talking about this, like, I don't really hear myself as a newer person, and then another, you know, another group of potentially newer folks coming in, or there will be new folks. So when you're having the discussion and planning, I would love to be, I know I'm not on this committee, first and foremost, but I still want to make sure that at minimum I can share my feedback, because it's, it's important, you know, like, we're new, I am a system, I'm a process person, like, I'm always thinking about improving processes, especially to serve folks who are underrepresented across the city. That is what I commit my life to. And so, just as a person who's only two and a half months in, I'm hearing you talking, it's great discussion, but I'm also not necessarily hearing my experience as someone who's like two and a half months in, being sort of, you know, not saying that you guys aren't considering it, but I just don't hear it in the, what might come of this process. So I'm just hopefully, hoping for a way to be included in the discussion about what this looks like going forward. So that's my two cents.
Alder Madison, you are, most of this discussion will take place either here at CCEC or, or our council. You, you're always welcome to participate. If there are more things you want to share with us this evening, as we're trying to figure out what the next steps are, I encourage you to do so. I think, you know, there, your unique experience of being new, and just being in a different district than everybody else, you know, we all have our unique experiences. That's, that's why this item is on the agenda. It's not just for, you know, CCEC members, but for any Alders that, that want to come and participate to, to give their feedback. So, so never be shy about that.
Oh, yeah.
To any, but, you know, I think, I think if this, if anything goes forward with this, whether it's in this council or, or, or the, the next council, I expect there to be, you know, pretty lengthy discussions on what that actually looks like and how to get there. If there's feedback you want to share directly with either Alder Foster or myself, please feel free, but you're also more than welcome to continue to participate here and whenever it's a topic here.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. But again, those are the sort of things, like, all of those process things, as a new Alder, I don't know, you know, I can very well actually say, hey, what, what can I, can I do at these meetings where I'm not on a committee, for example? But yeah, I, that's a good explanation, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, just to think about, on a committee, if you're not a member of the committee, the only thing you can't do is vote, but you can ask questions, you can participate, you are, you are a non-voting member of every single committee as Alder.
Gotcha. Alrighty, that's, I mean, I will, I think I've shared enough, especially with Debbie and Karen, where they have a, a minimum, they have all my process-related questions. But I will reach out to you and Alder Foster, or, you know, President Furman and Alder Foster to share some additional feedback, just from my perspective and from my district.
Appreciate that, thank you. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. I was also just gonna clarify a little bit for, for everybody, and maybe to your question, Vice President Curry. I mean, so this is just a discussion item on here, I mean, it really was my goal to have this discussion, so it's been really helpful. It's, this isn't something we actually have to take any action on, and I guess I would recommend that we don't refer this, since it is just a discussion item, you know, to a future CCEC. I would def, I think it is a worthwhile conversation to continue with the new council. You know, at this point, I'm not planning on, on working on introducing an actual budget amendment or doing anything else more formal with it. So I guess I would just say, you know, all y'all that are gonna be here next time, good luck, and I think you should have the conversations, and, but I, I don't, I don't think it makes sense to refer this discussion item to some future date. I would also just say, you know, part of why I, I'm kind of pressed to have this conversation, and part of why I, I think there sort of was an opportunity here, is because these two-year terms, you know, come and go super quick, there's gonna be a bazillion priorities that y'all are gonna deal with, and most likely, nobody is gonna actually deal with this question, and there isn't gonna be any action taken, but, but maybe I'll be surprised. And so, I, you know, as, as President Furman said before, this is obviously not about me, it's not gonna help me at all, but I'm just really trying to kind of take my knowledge from the time that I've spent on council, and, you know, do what I can to make it better for the folks that are coming after me. And in my opinion, this is one of the best things that, that we could do, to have more support for Alders and to make it better. But I, I will leave it up to the next council to kind of figure that out, and maybe they'll agree or disagree on it, and if they agree, I'm hopeful that they can, they can prioritize it and get it put into a future budget and, and make it happen. And in the meanwhile, I'd be happy to have some additional conversations offline and even work on a little bit of a pilot or something, if that information is helpful for, for the future council to, to consider taking action on it. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Debbie, go ahead.
Yeah, for what it's worth, I just wanted to say that in the length of time I've worked in the council office, I have seen over the years how the demands on Alders have done nothing but steadily increase. I think they get many more constituent contacts now than they used to. There's more expectations from neighborhood associations. And so even if this isn't something that we do in this moment, I do think it's eventually coming down the road somewhere because it doesn't seem like the public is supportive of a full-time council where each person would have their own staff to deal with these kind of things, kind of like they do at the state level. But for a part-time job, for someone who's trying to have balance in their life with work and family and other things, I can really see how it's a hardship for Alders.
Thank you, Debbie. Appreciate that. And obviously, we all very much appreciate what you do to support us. So thank you so much. Thank you for being here this evening. Any other thoughts, questions, discussions? I really appreciate this discussion tonight. It's really helpful to hear people's different perspectives. I will forever be frustrated that in this job, there are so many things where there's no right answer, such as this job. But, you know, do hope that this conversation continues. Not sure how much it's going to continue in the next few months, but it sounds like this will be something that hopefully at least the next council takes up and discusses more. All right, with that in mind, it's late. We've done a lot of work today in this committee. If there's no objection, I'd like to move on to the council update. And only, I mean, it's brief, but I'll only just ask people if they have any questions about the update that was sent out earlier. It's brief. Any questions about 75427? Not seeing any. You're welcome to reach out to Karen and ask her if you have any questions. I'm not prepared to really talk too much about future agenda items other than to tell you that we did have some items that were pointed out this evening that will be on future agenda items about the internship program. If we look at the list really quickly, let me just see if there's any other big callouts. While I pull up the list, just to give people an opportunity to hear quickly what's on my mind for future meetings. Is there anything anybody would like to see on our next agenda or any future agendas? You know, we are getting towards the end of this CCEC term. But we certainly, certainly open, you know, continuing discussions. I do know that at some point, we're going to have an update on the orientation that we could provide folks. An email went out, asking people some details on that. Hoping that at some point in the near future, at least, gives some sort of detail on some of the behind-the-scenes work done on committee stuff. Anything else, people, if you can't think of things, it's late. I'm sure a lot of people are hungry. Send me an email if you want to see something on our future agenda. But I do appreciate everybody's participation today. This was a long, packed meeting. So thank you, everybody. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Thank you.
Without any objection, I'm going to assume unanimous consent. Have a good evening, everybody. Thank you so much.